That person.
Yeah.
Unnecessary.
The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Area Development Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, June 14th, Flag Day 2016, and it is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Neal?
And remember.
Yes. Can we have a moment of silence for those in Orlando, Florida, for both those that were deceased and those that are still in the hospital? Heavenly Father Jesus, we come to you tonight. We come to you, Heavenly Father, with just heavy hearts because of what took place in Orlando. We know, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you are in control, and we know, Heavenly Father Jesus, that it's not your desire that innocent tragic things should happen like that. We just ask tonight, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you be with that community. Lift them up, Heavenly Father. Just show them your wonderful grace. Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with our community, that we might have your blessing, that you might bless us, Heavenly Father, that we might be able to go forth knowing that all things are provided by you, and those things that are provided by you are all great things. We ask you tonight to be with this council. We know, Heavenly Father Jesus, that have quite a few items that really needs to be discussed, and we just know, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you've given each one of them the wisdom. You've given each one of them, Heavenly Father Jesus, the time and the ability to make a decision based upon what's best for this great community. We know you've placed them in this position, Heavenly Father, and we just ask tonight that you be with them when they make the decisions. And we ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that as a community, we stand behind them and stand with them. We ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you be with our city staff, be with each person that works for this community. Heavenly Father, be with each citizen of the City of Riverbank. We just ask that you bless them, be with them, as we praise and worship you tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call.
Councilmember LeAnn Jones Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Cal Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Janine Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Richard O'Brien.
Here.
Conflict of interest. Any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered this evening is to declare their conflict at this time.
I have a conflict with two items on the agenda.
And I have.
Three C.
And I also have a conflict with item three C and five point one.
And I also have a conflict with item three C.
I have a conflict with item three C. That should be an interesting item. At this point, I am going to declare that I will be moving the agenda items as those who will be coming in to present some of the items, as they arrive, we will shift to those that are in support of and their particular items. That should be item six one and six two.
And Mayor, just to add to the interesting activities of this evening, I did want to let you know that in terms of the conflict on item three point C, because that's a consent calendar item for members of the public, that the members that are not, do not select numbers to vote can stay at the dais for that one. For the one, five point one, because that is a regular agenda item, those council members that have a conflict will need to step down from the dais for that. And then in addition, I would like to point out that we have Luanne Bain filling in today for Annabelle Aguilar, supported by Norma Torres-Manriquez, and Holly Churchwell from Churchwell White is also here observing tonight for that. So we've.
Public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter's jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comment? Saying none, we're going to move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar consists of three A, wave reading. Item three B, resolution Consolidated Lighting, Landscape and Lighting District Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for the Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2016-17. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2016-2017. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, for preliminarily approval of the annual levy report of the Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2016-17. Item three C, resolution Crossroad Landscape and Lighting District Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for the Crossroad Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2016-2017. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, for the Crossroad Landscape and Lighting District declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for fiscal year 2016-17. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, for preliminary approval of the annual levy report for the Crossroads Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2016-2017. Three D, resolution declaring its intention to levy and collect annual assessments within the Riverbank Storm Drain District Number 2006-01 Heartlands for fiscal year 2016-2017. Resolution three E, Ridgewood Place Landscaping and Landscape and Lighting District Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for the Ridgewood Place Landscape and Lighting District for fiscal year 2016-2017. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for the Ridgewood Place Landscape and Lighting District for fiscal year 2016-17. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, for preliminary approval of the annual levy report for the Ridgewood Place Landscape and Lighting District for fiscal year 2016-2017. Three F, resolution River Cove Landscaping and Lighting District Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for the Landscape and Lighting District Number One River Cove Subdivision for fiscal year 2016-17. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for the Landscape and Lighting District Number One River Cove Subdivision for fiscal year 2016-17. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, for preliminary approval of the annual levy report for the Landscape and Lighting District Number One River Cove Subdivision for fiscal year 2016-17. Resolution Sierra Vista Estates Landscaping and Lighting District. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessment for the Sierra Vista Estates Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2016-17. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for Sierra Vista Estates Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2016-17. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, for preliminary approval of annual levy report for Sierra Vista Estates Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2016-17. Resolution three H, declaring the city's intention to levy and collect annual assessments within the Riverbank Storm Drain District Number 05-01 Sterling Ridge for fiscal year Item three I, resolution calling and giving notice for holding of a general municipal election on Tuesday, November 8th, 2016, for the election of certain officers as required by the provisions of the laws of the state of California relating to general law cities, requesting the County Board of Supervisors of Stanislaus to permit the county election officials to render elections services, and requesting the consolidation of said election with a statewide general election held on the same day. We are pulling item three C to act on a separate action. Is there anyone from the public wishing to pull any other item? Saying none, any discussion or recommendation from the city council with the exception of three C?
I make a recommendation that we make a motion to accept the consent calendar with the exception of item three C.
I second it.
We have a motion to approve the consent calendar minus three C and a second.
Councilmember Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes. This time we'll draw straws or flip coins or. Numbers. And what are the numbers representing?
One, two, three, four. One and two get to vote.
Okay.
Three and four get to sit here.
What? Oh, there's four people. Great.
They can have a brownie. Graciously provided by our mayor.
Okay, now let's reveal what you have. One and two, all right.
Okay, there you go.
Vice Mayor and the Mayor and Councilmember Campbell. Do I have any discussion on three C from the public? Saying none, do I have any recommendations or discussion from the remaining council members?
I'll move that we approve item three C.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item, consent item three C.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes. We're still under the seventeen minute rule.
Item four one, second reading by title only, and adoption of proposed ordinance number 2016-005 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, leveling special taxes within the City of Riverbank Community Facility District Number 2016-1 Public Services.
Yes. Mayor members of the city council, as you may recall, this item was introduced for first reading with a full staff report at the second meeting in May. It is brought back before you this evening for a second reading with a recommendation to adopt. In a nutshell, this is a community facilities district that would establish fees for new development in areas of the City of Riverbank in order to ensure that new residents have the same level of service as existing residents. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to address them.
Are there any comments from the public on item four one? Saying none, I bring it back to the council for either discussion or recommendation.
I'll make a motion if we approve item four point one.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve item four point one and a second.
Councilmember LeAnn Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
And Mayor O'Brien.
Yes. We're going to move to item six point, oh, wait a minute, five point one. Never mind, we can do that.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, adopting a parking in lieu fee as authorized by the City of Riverbank's Downtown Specific Plan. Before we start the discussion on this, if it's already been approved by the Downtown Specific Plan by the city council, why is there a separate resolution?
Mayor members of the council, first of all, I think the two members of the council that have conflict, if they could step down at this time.
Can we have that answered before they step down? I'd like to.
Yeah, I believe because it sets forth actually having to set the fee, and I'll let Donna add. Donna Kenny, our planning and building manager, will be addressing, providing a staff report on this issue.
Before they leave, do you have any comments or questions on it? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to state for the record, I didn't have any conflicts until I signed a lease on June 8th for downtown, so there we go.
So leave. That took a minute out of us.
So to answer your question, the Downtown Specific Plan calls out that the city council may set a fee for these parking in lieu fees, and at the time, the fee was not set. It just gave you the mechanism to set one.
Are we asking for fees now?
No. The, there are two projects have come forth since the Downtown Specific Plan went into effect, and we put placeholders in their conditions of approval. The Horizons Healthcare Project next door to City Hall South has a requirement of four spaces, and the Stanislaus Cheese Project down the street on Santa Fe has a requirement of three spaces.
What are you proposing in the fees?
Do you want me to go through my presentation?
Let's just know what your fees are and see if it's reasonable.
Okay. The fee has calculated out, oops, change the page here. The fee has calculated out to twelve hundred and nine, excuse me, $1,295 per parking space, and the way that was calculated is we took the average size of a parking spot in the city, and we determined the cost of an acre of land, and a parking spot is .37 percent of an acre, which equals out to $370.
Say that again.
Point three seven percent.
Oh, point three seven percent.
Yes. Of an acre is three hundred and seventy for the land. Then if you take a one acre parking lot and pave and stripe it, that's approximately $250,000, and so 161 square feet average of that is $925. So if we take the 925 plus the 370, you get your 1295 per space, one time fee.
Will this just be applied to new businesses?
Good question. This applies to commercial and industrial only. It does not apply to residential, and it involves a change in use to a higher use. For example, with, if you have a retail space and then that tenant moves out and another retailer moves in, there's absolutely no change. What happened with the clinic is it was a retail space and the parking was at a certain level. Then it changed to a higher use, which is a medical clinic and has a lot more parking needs, and that's how we take what was the parking calculation for the retail and we subtract it from the parking calculation for the medical clinic, and there was a deficit of four spaces.
Donna, is this the way you, your formula that you shared with us? Is this how other cities would calculate this, or?
Correct. This was provided by our city attorney.
One other quick question. What do you do with the money that you collect? What does it go into?
That would be up to the council. You have the right to put it in the general fund, but you also can put it into a restricted fund that could go to a parking lot or a parking structure in the future.
We don't have to make that determination now, or can we make that determination now? Okay. So when we do determine what to do with it, it better go to a parking, for parking, because that's what we're charging them for. Okay, any further comments, questions? Anything from the public? Okay. Shall we move forward?
I move that we approve item four point one.
Five point one.
I'm sorry, five point one. I'm still on the wrong line.
I second it.
We have a motion to approve item five point one and a second.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Passes three zero.
Open the doors, let them in. We'll go to item six point three.
Mayor, we'll take that as direction, as that's how we'll account for the money when we bring it back.
Yeah, we have to account for, I mean, it's.
Good question. Tom, when we bring it back, does it need to be on public hearing or consent?
No, it'll just, the next time we have something related budgetary that where that, we can work that in, we'll just present that in that manner and not do a separate action.
Thank you.
Based on the direction.
I think Mayor Sullivan may want to set up a different fund for it, another one to account for.
Why not?
She doesn't have enough funds. Item six point three, resolution adopting, approving the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding between Stanislaus Business Alliance and the city regarding the joint implementation of countywide economic development plan and marketing strategy.
Mayor members of the city council, after confirming availability, Dave White realized that he had a conflict and apologized profusely that he was not able to be here this evening. We did think that a staff thought it was best that Mr. White, who's the executive director of the Stanislaus Business Alliance, be here to present this item. There have been a number of questions about the alliance and the upcoming reorganization, and so we have, asking to table this matter to the 28th of June.
Let's move forward on this item. I saw the staff report. I listened to discussions on it, and although I don't believe we're getting a bang for our buck, it would not be wise if we did not accept this, at least for the interim time. There's changes being made to the alliance. What is the expenditure on it? $10,000?
Yes.
Any discussion from council?
I agree with you completely about what you said. I don't think we're getting our bang for the buck, but I know that the alliance is going through some transition because of certain changes that have been done to the law, and we need to stay with them, I feel, a little bit longer to give them the chance to see what they can actually do. So I would go along with your, what you suggest.
And I share the same thoughts and concerns. I think $10,000 is a lot of money, personally, to spend on something that we've got some other priorities, just a thought to throw out there.
I'm just looking at for the future if we don't, the way that I understand it, they're marking, their marketing plan is for Stanislaus County. We're in that region, and so I just don't want us to be left out, you know, not being part of their program and their plan. So, you know, just looking at for the future. So I think we should be in it.
And we have the, we have the momentum moving forward where we will need a regional marketing plan, in my opinion. Any discussion from the public? Saying none, I'm bringing it back to the council for a recommendation or further comments.
I make a motion that we accept item six point three, as stated.
A second.
We have a motion to accept item, to approve item six three and a second.
Councilmember Jones Cruz.
No.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Passes four one.
Item six point four, resolution approving a vendor agreement to operate a food truck at Jacob Myers Park.
Mayor members of the city council, Sue Fitzpatrick, our Director of Parks and Recreation, is going to provide an overview of a proposal to get your feedback on whether we should move forward with the potential of having a food truck at Jacob Myers Park.
Mayor members of the council. Ah, sorry. I'll just go ahead. We have received a couple proposals in the Parks and Recreation Department for food trucks to go out to Jacob Myers Park, and the Friends of Jacob Myers Park has been putting that in the agenda almost every meeting we have, is how am I doing on getting vendors into the park? So we did have two proposals come across our desk, and we wanted to, before we move forward with anything, is just make sure council approved the direction and make sure that we have approval and agreement that meets council's approval before we move forward. So as part of our strategic plan is to achieve and maintain financial stability and sustainability, that's what we've been trying to do at Jacob Myers Park just over the past, what, probably five or six years, and we've probably saved about $30,000 in just with the parking fee and with the management plan that we put in place, creating the revenue that's able to offset the operating and maintenance costs. So the current generation of revenue that we have is a seasonal parking fee, the reservations of the various spots that we have out there at the park, weddings, which probably is the most recent revenue generated that we've had. And like I said, all the revenue supports the park operations and maintenance, and that's worked out really well. So with the food truck proposals, if it was approved, the food truck would be located in the grass area. There's kind of a large open grass area there, right behind the entrance sign, and that is the area that we feel would be an ideal spot where it's visible, it's not going to impact the crowds at the park, it's not going to be too close to anyone's barbecue areas, and that's kind of what we looked at for that, easy in and easy out.
Security for children in that area.
Yeah. Yes, we would be very careful of that. The food truck would be at the park on weekends and holidays only, and it would be seasonal, probably May through September, maybe a little bit into October. We'll have to kind of see how attendance is. There'd be a written agreement in place with the chosen company that the city attorneys have drafted for us. The insurance and all permits would be required, as well as the city business license, and the agreement would include a flat fee stated paid to the Jacob Myers Park Fund on a monthly basis. With the revenue generated, the city would negotiate a fee that would benefit the vendor and also the city, the park. A good starting point may be $400 per month for June, July, and August, which is the busiest, busiest times of the year, and then 20% of net fees collected in September, and if we went into October, it'd be the same there. So it's basically just another idea to generate revenue, and we have had some requests for vendors. I don't think so much for the people who come to barbecue, but there's a lot of people who raft, and the rafters get out, and I think that would be a good, good idea for them, you know, to have some food where they can purchase and also benefit the park. So that's the idea, and we just wanted to kind of get council's input and see what your direction would be on this.
Well, I have questions about how would this impact employee hours, cleaning up the park, trash pickup?
Yeah, it wouldn't impact, we already have staff there. In the agreement, we, it would specify that they have to clean up their trash, and it will be self-contained, and they will haul everything away. They have a commissary that they go to, and so really, I don't see any additional work by employees or staff at all. The thing is, this would be trial. You know, we would try it this summer. If it didn't work out, we wouldn't have to do it again next summer. It could be definitely a trial and error thing, as it would be for the vendor. They may. They may find that, that business is not what we thought it would be, because people do bring a lot of their food to barbecue. So I think we'll kind of keep our eye on that. I mean, we do try some things and they don't work, and then we don't want to do them again.
Has the vendor been in business for a while? Or is he a new food truck? Or does he have a history?
Yeah, the two that I have on my desk now that we would review and we would actually interview, one has a contract with Modesto City Schools and one with Silgan Containers, and they've been around for 20 years. The other one is similar, I think maybe not quite as long of a history, but up there. And I've seen pictures of the food trucks and they look good. So we'd be interviewing about all of those things. They would have to, like I said, go through the, not only the Stanislaus County Health Department, but also Samwell Keane. So that's pretty tough if they're going to pass.
This is something that's been supported by the Friends of Jacob Myers Park as well, right?
Yes, they've been kind of pushing the idea of getting some vendors out there. And I just haven't been able to spend much time on it, but it happened to be that, that two of the vendors just dropped off proposals, and that's what kind of pushed us into moving it forward now.
My question was, and you may have just answered it, I looked according to the report that it was for one food truck. Is it many, as many as you, that want to come down there or just one?
No, we're thinking just one. Maybe if there was another type of vendor, like ice cream vendor, maybe we would come back and talk about that. But really, the park is so full, we don't want to have a whole lot of vendors coming in and out.
What type is it?
The two that I have on my desk are taco trucks, but they sell a variety of things within that truck.
I think if we approve this, we should take a look at where it could benefit the city and other portions without harming any brick and mortars. I was thinking, you know, in some of the isolated areas, out off of Claus Road, near Clarabelle, something like that.
I just got back from a vacation that had an interesting food truck area. They had rolled out green astroturf and had like five trucks all parked in a dirt vacant lot that looked like a building had been removed. And it was an interesting use of space that was right downtown in the middle of, across the street from six restaurants. And then not only brought people to the food trucks, there were lines to get into the six restaurants across the street, too. It was pretty cool. It didn't seem to harm or hurt the restaurants that were, like I said, directly across the street. It was hopping. And it was an interesting setup, picnic tables, umbrellas, astroturf, and six trucks, kind of similar to that dirt lot that's right over there. Just, just saying.
At, in Modesto, not that we really want to compare ourselves to Modesto, but along 10th Street, there's a row of food vendor trucks. And they have semi-permanent canopies, tables, kind of like what you were suggesting, there's about 15. And they probably need a parking fee in lieu of back there because it's so crowded in there, even though not one of them, never mind, I just, I'm on a roll tonight. Okay.
But wait, Sue, the, where you say that they would park would be alongside that road, right?
No, they'd be on the grass in that little, kind of where we had the climbing wall, if anyone remembers where we had the climbing wall during River Fest, the one year, we didn't have this year, but kind of where the petting zoo was this year, right in that little open area that's kind of away from most of the barbecues, kind of to the, the east of the Rotary Park picnic area.
So they would not hinder cars going back and forth on the road there?
No. And they, we would want them to come in before the park got real crowded and then leave after, so that it wouldn't be trying to finagle in and out of our other, already crowded parking lot. So, and that's some of the things, well, is it going to create more issues for us than we already have? Or is it going to be a positive thing? And that's something that we would evaluate and we would report to you on how that's going, too.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public?
Edward Jones, I stay at Mobile Home Park outside of town, edge of town. The, I noticed a couple little league baseball games I've gone to. You mentioned about maybe a vendor going to a vacant spot somewhere. You couldn't find a better spot than a junior league baseball field. There's nothing there but sand and dirt and ballplayers. If we had a taco wagon or something there, it'd sure help out with coffee drinks and sandwiches, so you can spill it all over the place. I just thought maybe it's a good idea.
Well, we have to discuss that, and we have some provisions against that. So we're going, this is a segue into reviewing vendor trucks. Any further comment? I bring it back for a recommendation.
I'll move that we approve item 6.4.
I second that motion.
We have a motion to approve item 6.4 in a second.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Cal Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Mayor members of the city council, Melissa Holdaway is going to be providing you a preview of the LRA budget for 2016, 2017. This item will be brought before you for action on June 28th, along with the city's proposed budget for 2016, 2017.
Good evening, chair and authority members. I am bringing forth the proposed FY 2016-17 LRA budget. The 2016-17 budget assumptions we have right now are the army lease being executed, which is our operations and maintenance, and ESCA number two, estimated burn rate, and if it will stay on target as predicted in this following fiscal year. A memorandum of agreement, the MOA executed, and the OEA supplemental grant funded. We have a tentative approval, but we don't have the executed agreement yet. The anticipated potential impacts to this fiscal year is the loss of the OEA funding after December 2016. That does cover our administrative and professional services picked up, and we will have to have it picked up by other revenue sources after December. ESCA number two, our grant match is critical for replacing the roof and siding. And then execute the MOA, we lose the caretaker revenue, and we have to start paying the permits, fees, and assessments on the property at that time. The LRA budget funds are three funds. Fund 197 is the leasehold revenue. This fund accounts for the site revenue, rents, utility payments, DoD caretaker, and miscellaneous revenue. And the expenditures are the operations and maintenance, utilities, infrastructure improvements, facility management contract, and security. It also covers our grant match for the OEA grant. Fund 198, OEA grants, this fund covers our personnel costs, administrative costs, professional services, legal, and special studies. Traditionally has been at 90%, with our match at 10% that does come from 197. Fund 199 is our ESCA, the current ESCA that we have, ESCA number two. This fund covers personnel and administrative costs associated with the project, contracts associated with remediation project, and disposal. All revenue generated on the site must be reinvested into the site, so the funds are nondiscretionary. Our LRA budget overview for this next fiscal year, we're going to have a beginning reserve estimated at $4,989,939, with estimated revenues of $21 million and estimated expenditures of $22 million, with an estimated ending reserve of $3,900,000. The beginning and ending reserve does not include, it does include the advance payment that we're receiving in this fiscal year to start this whole project moving along. So there's advance of funds for ESCA two is in the budget year, along with a contingency for overruns. That's why it's so high. Our site revenue projections for this year are $2,420,000, which is just about 3% higher than the last fiscal year. It's due to caretaker revenue. We got a little bit more money out of them this year. Hopefully, we'll have it through March. So we did happen to bump that up a little bit more for security and some lighting projects that we have out there.
Could have said increased revenue.
Could have. The site expenditure overview, our expenditures also increased quite a bit, by 39%, and that is due to the increased cost to run the site. And also, our maintenance contract and our security contract has increased a bit with labor costs rising, so that has affected our budget as well. The grant revenue overview is just the Office of Economic Adjustment Fund, and this revenue is $382,483 this year, but it is decreasing to $197,000 due to us only getting the funding through December, so we're only getting half a year. And that's a change of 48%. The expenditure overview is the same exact, we, what we receive for the personnel and administrative expenses is what we get out of the grant, so it's a wash. We don't get any extra funding from that grant.
On the OEA, is that their fiscal year or our fiscal year?
It's going to be our fiscal year from July through December. ESCA number two revenue overview, we're receiving an initial payment of $8,454,000. I think it was wrong in the staff report, I wanted to bring that to your attention. We were off, I had done a transposition error, and I think I put 554 instead of 454, so I want to bring that to your attention now. The revenue that we're receiving in this fiscal year is $18 million. We're hoping that with the burn rate that we're calculating out, that's what we're going to need. So the difference between this fiscal year we're in now and next year is $10 million with a 120% increase. The expenditure overview, we're estimating about $4,600,000 spent in this fiscal year before June 30. That's the target, but we're not sure if we're going to make it, so we may have more carryover in the following year. Our revenue expenditures for this next fiscal year is estimated at $18 million with a difference of $14 million, and that's just because the project's really ramping up in this fiscal year. So it's a difference of 301%. Any comments?
Any comments, questions? Again, I, your breakdown is, is good. When we see the final for next meeting, just explain a little bit more of where the ESCA money is going. ESCA two, I'm sorry, ESCA two. I, you have it here, I'd just like to have it stated.
Sure.
Questions, comments? Anything from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back here, and that is a, the exception of the, accepting of the presentation, right? We receive the budget next time. So we'll move on to item 6.6. All right. May I lead this one? Darlene and Cal, did you guys have updates on the marijuana law last week or when you went up to the leg?
Now, there wasn't too much said at all about it.
We had, we had the proponents at the, at the environmental, and it was about a three-hour discussion. Recreational marijuana, they predict will pass by 65%. They only need 50%, 50% plus one. And so they're still wrestling with, you know, how to present it. And some of the things that we have to do in the future is, what are we going to do in this region? And we have to start thinking about it now. The county wanted to have a marijuana tax placed on the, this November budget, but it would compete with the transportation budget, or tax. One of, a couple of things that we have to realize, if I can find my notes, is that California's going to do it right in this marijuana legislation. They're going to avoid the 400% increase in infants to five-year-olds contact with marijuana that Colorado came through. They're going to prevent the 39% increase in drug driving accidents. They're going to avoid the 400% increase in emergency care due to marijuana overdose. They're going to prevent the five to 12-year-olds consuming marijuana products that Colorado has experienced. California is fooling themselves. And we are going to pay those impacts when it comes to us. Now, the county has a proposal out, is that if a community, if, does, first off, does the community, the county accept marijuana to be dispensed in Stanislaus? If so, should they pay their impacts? If they accept it. If they don't accept it, you can just go right across the county line and get your marijuana. So you have the impacts without the possibility of taxing. They have saying, okay, what if we say we only allow five dispensaries in the, in Stanislaus County? Denver alone has 192 medical marijuana dispensaries and 42 dispensaries. And they still see the demand, the need for it. So over the next couple of months, the county will be, or the next, probably the half year, coming up with some type of revenue sharing scheme for those who are allowing a dispensary in their city limits, and how that's going to affect the county, and how much is that's going to be shared. One of their proposals is, the county will get 10% administration fee, and we'll split the rest of it by population. That seems to be a little bit too excessive to the, if, if Riverbank had it, let's say they made a million dollars in, in revenue, they would get 40, let's say $50,000 out of the million dollars in tax revenue, and the lion's share of 400,000 plus will go to Modesto. That's the current scheme. Another one, what it was supposed to have been, is, well, let's say Riverbank has it, and it has certain impacts on its police, how much impact is it? Can it be identified in the amount of officers and overtime? And they pay for that first, and then share it out with everybody. And that seems like that is a good share. However, it's subject to the county's interpretation of your impacts. And we should take a look at what is our, our position. Personally, I'd like to see any tax generated within the city, whether it be Modesto or it be Riverbank, that 50% of those taxes goes to the city for their impacts, and directly to the county for the health services, the emergency services, the, one of the benefits of marijuana in Colorado is a tremendous increase in homelessness. I can't wait to have that happen here. That's a benefit. So this is just a discussion. I thought maybe you guys had that at the leg.
No, we didn't.
Okay.
They mentioned it was going to be on the ballot, but that's all.
All right. And the ballot is not written yet. They have, I've got seven more days. I got the message. Okay, but anyway, we need to take a close look at it, whether we have a workshop. But if we have a workshop, we're going to invite a lot of comments on everything that is presented, pro con, don't tax marijuana because it's our right. Other byproducts of marijuana is the tremendous stench it has. And where are we going to, if we allow it, where are we going to allow it? You could have industrial grows in warehouses that will increase your electricity use, which will increase your electrical cost per household, which will increase, you know... which will increase your electrical cost per household, which will increase, you know, demands on services. You'll also have to deal with problems of greater expulsions from grade-end high schools. So, what, however we want to do it, and we're not making a decision tonight, we're just starting a discussion. So, I think what we need to do is get the, don't laugh, it is called a mountain rocky high report. And for each of us, plus those who are going to be presenting, and the pros and the cons, not just from the ballot, but the actual discussion points on legalization of marijuana and what impacts they expect. Legalization of marijuana will have zero effect on the illegal grows in Northern California or in some of the other illegal grows. Well, it will have, has effect on our agriculture, it will have, we have to make a decision before the end of next year, as if we're going to have it, and how are we going to control it to prevent someone from using it in a empty warehouse they have downtown. So, these are issues we're going to have to tackle with our legal team, coming up with a solid plan. Oh, there are some brownies over there, for anyone who would like some. But, no, seriously, that is what's coming down on this great state of California, resolution or taxing of marijuana, bringing it in. The state of California sees tremendous taxes being generated, and the DOF will get some because they have to administer it, and it'd go into programs of prevention of illegal use of marijuana, those underage, and the rest will go to your local police, called the California Highway Patrol. So, you have no support from the state of California. So, we have an interesting year coming on up.
I had a concern about the chemicals that are used and that going into our stormwater.
Yes.
So, that's something to think about, too. How do we control that? And with it going into the river, and, you know?
Well, with this, you can't stop anyone from getting a delivery, unless it's by mail, anyone from growing, if they're over the age of 21, six mature plants and six maturing plants. You can't stop it. You can't control it. And if you have a family of four over the age of 21, which are some in my neighborhood, that's 24 mature plants, 24 maturing plants.
We're just going to have to look at this, and I appreciate the information you gave us tonight, because it's got me thinking a lot, but we're going to have to look at this and just more or less, it's coming, and we're going to have to try to put together the best way to deal with it to our advantage, for what advantages there are, because there are going to be a lot of disadvantages.
There are, especially on our youth. It's going to be tremendous on our youth. Okay. And can we just move on from here? Okay.
Mayor, if I could just comment for the record that we had indicated that there might be a staff report for this item because of the way things changed over the course of the couple of days from the printing of the agenda to this meeting tonight, there was no need for a staff report, so a verbal report has not been provided by the mayor. With more to come.
All right, the county will not be joining us, or StanCOG will not be joining us for the meeting tonight, so...
And so, actually, Mayor, while the first message was that they would not, we have received another message that the attorney is on his way, so...
Okay, so we can start presentation of item 6.1?
Yes, we may.
I'm going to grab a brownie on that.
I think you earned a brownie. And so, Kathleen Kleek will be providing an overview of the project list. So, while she's setting up the PowerPoint, everyone can grab a bite, a brownie bite. Mayor, members of the city council, as you know, for more than a year, this, the county of Stanislaus has been talking about a proposed sales tax measure in order to let the voters decide on the level of service they'd like to see in terms of transportation, maintenance, and potential improvements. And so, as a part of that effort, the city has participated in preparing an expenditure plan project list in the event that StanCOG does vote to place this measure before the voters in November and that the voters ultimately approve it. Kathleen Kleek has been working closely on this, and she's going to provide an overview of the expenditure plan project list, which you had an opportunity to first review at the end of April.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, I'm going to go over the City of Riverbank's proposed 25-year expenditure plan project list. The project list contains local streets and roads, traffic management, and bike and pedestrian improvements. So, as the city manager stated, the Stanislaus Council of Governments Policy Board is proposing a one-half cent sales tax measure for the 2016 November ballot. Sales tax will fund local and regional transportation projects and programs. One of the steps requested by StanCOG is for each city and county to develop a 25-year project list divided between local streets and roads, traffic management, and bicycle and pedestrian projects. So, a list was developed and presented to you in April 26th meeting. The list was compiled from the city's capital improvement plan, pavement management, and general plan. The projects identified in the plan detailed a comprehensive list of infrastructure improvements that were identified as priority projects. Another review was completed, and a few minor changes were made to that plan, so I wanted to share those with you tonight. So, under local streets and roads, there are no changes. Traffic management, we removed the signal installation at State Route 108 in Claus and the signal improvements at State Route 108 and First Street, and those two projects have been moved to the regional projects. So, by moving those to the regional projects, they go into the regional pot of money, and that frees up additional monies for us, not having to allocate those monies to those two projects. And then, the bicycle and pedestrian, I have no changes to that at this time. We did, do have, I was going to state this under staff comments, but this would be a good time to share. We submitted three active transportation applications today, so we're real excited about that. So, two of those projects that we submitted are under, on the bike and ped. So, if we were to get granted those applications, then next year, when we come around for our review, we would be able to replace and put some additional projects in that slot.
Are there matching funds on those?
We, what we did is we looked at our LTF funds that we had, and I believe we put 2 percent in for two of the projects, and we put 10 percent in for the plan, and that was LTF money that we had set aside for projects. You're welcome. So, go over this real quick, you've seen this before. The local streets and roads is 50 percent of the funds. Funds will be used exclusively for maintenance, this is not for any new streets, it's only, it's maintenance-only. The city is projected to receive a little over $656,000 annually for those projects. So, and here's a list of projects again. And like I stated, these are reviewed, at this time, this is how we see the, everything kind of laid out. It's kind of hard to see into the future, there may be roads that come up that need attention earlier than others. We can review this and bring it back to you annually with any changes. So, any of the changes that we do make, we will bring to the city council to make those changes. Because there are local funds, we can make changes to this plan, because there are funds. The regional projects, we can't make any changes to, but we're in charge of the local funds. Overlay and slurry seal, same thing? Overlay is, no, a slurry seal is just a seal over the top. The overlay is usually where you grind and you have to replace, so it's a lot more expensive and a lot more involved. So, the traffic management projects can include upgrades to local intersections, signalization, traffic calming methods. The city's projected to receive a little over $131,000 annually for those projects. And then, bicycle and pedestrian projects include local connectivity, local schools, trails, recreation facilities, and the city's projected to receive a little over $65,000 annually for those. And what we're hoping with this is that we put in an active transportation, we asked for a plan, so that we could hire a consultant to come in and look at Riverbank, talk to the schools, talk to the residents, and get ideas for projects that we could fill in this area. So, as you can see, bicycle lane striping, pedestrian path to be determined, so we have a pot of money there that, hopefully, that plan will help us figure out where we need to make those improvements. Same with the traffic management, there's a large amount that we can look at and plan our projects accordingly. So, these projects will help to maintain and preserve the city's transportation system, infrastructure, and create opportunities for non-motorized connectivity. The list will be reviewed annually, and any changes or adjustments to the list will be brought before the city council for approval. So, tonight's recommendation is the city council adopt the City of Riverbank's expenditure project list for the local streets, traffic management, and bike and pedestrian improvements. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Are there any questions from the public? Bring it back to the council for a recommendation and or further discussions.
I move that we accept item 6.1 as stated.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item 6.1 and a second.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Passes 6.0, 5.0, sorry, can't count.
All right, we either move on, or we... Why don't we move to item 7.1, staff comments?
Certainly. Mayor, members of the council, we'll start off staff comments this evening with Maricela Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I wanted to advise the public that we currently are taking applications for our utility rate assistance program. It's designed to assist our residents over the age of 65 or who are permanently disabled and who meet our income limits. Applications are available at City Hall South, City Hall North in administration, and in recreation as well, as well as our website. Applications were initially going to be accepted through June 30th, but we have extended the deadline to July 28th.
Michael Radel, Public Works Superintendent.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. So, I'll talk to you a little bit about the self-certification on our water conservation numbers. We've been working on that for about 10 days now through a consultant to look at those numbers. I can tell you that everything is pretty favorable. I do have to caution you, though, we are still under a water conservation order. My hope is that once we self-certify, I'll have the discussion with the Office of Enforcement, and we can get them to lift this conservation order. That's my hope. Whether or not that will come to fruition, we'll have to wait and see. But, it is looking very good at this point. So, as you can see, is, water use has kind of dropped down on us a little bit, although we declined on this last month at 20 percent reduction. So, we still didn't meet our 30 percent, although that 30 percent doesn't apply anymore, because as of 22nd of this month, we'll self-certify. So, I know it's kind of vague in kind of letting you know where we're at, but as Councilmember Campbell once commented, I'm now smiling, so it's getting better.
What we want is your efforts to meet as much of a conservation as you possibly can through the improvements of your systems and through the improvements and the notification of the residents through the metering systems. So, those are tools that can solve a lot of the mechanical and the individual's problems. If we identify increase in water uses for certain individuals, we can counsel them, or we could at least notify them that there is an increase, there's maybe something wrong, things like that. That is, that's conservation.
Yes, sir.
Conservation does not mean stop using, but it does...
No, no.
We're on the road, just keep doing what we've asked you to do, and I will get there.
Yes, sir, no doubt.
Michael, just one quick thing, in terms of what self-certification means in the eyes of the state?
So, the state of California basically wants us to take a look at our water supply, and they want us to figure that we could, if we face three more years of drought, whether or not, we can supply the water to our customers, in essence, or to our residents. So, basically, what they're saying is you look at the amount of water you can produce, and if over that three-year drought period that you found out that you had a 15 percent shortfall, then that would be, then you would face a 5 percent conservation number each year. Okay? The issue we're looking at and taking a look at our production numbers and what we have done as far as the water underneath us and how that, because this basin that we draw, you know, the basin's got a bunch of straws in it, and we got 10 of them. The basin that we're drawing is, this has been managed since the mid-'90s, so this basin doesn't have any problems. It doesn't have any appreciable amount of drop. We're not seeing any subsidence, we're not seeing a drop in our water levels. As I've commented before, they don't call us Riverbank for nothing. We got that river running through here, and that does a groundwater recharge for us the whole time. You just don't have water running on the surface there, there's water running underneath that, too. And that also works in our favor. So, the preliminary numbers, and I don't want to delve in this too much, because I don't want to get your hopes up and then dash them, but the preliminary numbers are looking very favorable for us at a 0 percent conservation rate. However, I don't think the state of California's going to accept that. So, we'll have to do what we can do that's politically expedient to get them to accept it and go through this process and certify that. And I think we'll be able to do that, it's just going to be a matter of what kind of figure that we come up with. I know that the state of California's not going to accept 0 percent from us, so we'll have to, we've taken a look at that aspect of production, we also have taken a look at our urban water management plan, because within the urban water management plan, we made the statement in 2010 that we would reduce our, the amount of water used in this city by 20 percent by 2020, which is four years away. Well, we've looked at those numbers, too, and we achieved that 20 percent last year. So, the problem I think that we could run into here is the fact that the state arbitrarily went after everybody through the executive order by saying that we're going to reduce by 25 percent and grab that year 2013 for whatever reason. So, that complicated matters for us. So, I think we got taken to task for what the state of California wanted us to do, and then actually got penalized when we were already on the road to what we were supposed to be doing through our urban water management plan.
For, one of the questions Michael and I had talked about is whether or not the council needed to certify for self-certification, and what he's informed me is basically it's an engineer's stamp on the documents that we need to submit to the state next week. However, in light of the fact that there may be a need to look at those numbers and then establish maybe a different conservation rate, it's possible that we'll need to bring that back to the council for some feedback. But, did want to let you know what we're doing, the deadline that they established was very short, and we'll be submitting that with the engineers, with the engineers' report, and then continue to report back to the council on how that process is going.
The self-certification is through the state database, so that means I will make the self-certification, but they'll want data to back it up, and they'll want... and they'll want to see that engineer's stamp. So more to come.
I just had a quick question. The basin you were talking about, are the only ones that draw off that basin? Or is there other?
No. Modesto sub-basin serves Riverbank. It serves the city of Oakdale, serves the city of Modesto. It serves OID and MID. So there's quite a few straws in that basin.
Modesto's drilling a new well on the north side of Kernan.
Now, Modesto's problem is they have trouble finding good water. They've drilled a few wells, but none of them have come to fruition because of the treatment. You know, you go out and develop a well, it costs you about $1 million. You've got to put some treatment on there. It can run you up to $4, $5 million for a well. So that's one of their dilemmas. Thank you.
And then finally, Kathleen Klee, who'll be back, provide an update on this slurry seal project.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Our slurry seal project is going as planned, and tomorrow is the last day. So we have about nine streets that'll be slurry tomorrow. So anyway, it seems to have gone smoothly. We've had a couple of hiccups, but we've been able to manage those. So anyway, we're excited. And anyway, it was a good, big project. And you know, it's good to be able to see some projects going. Also to let you know, Morel Road, that will be going out to bid in July. So you'll be seeing that, but that will be from Jackson to Oakdale. And that will be actually a resurfacing and ADA improvements. And thank you. I also want to thank you all for your support on the ATP applications, all your help outreach. We had a lot of letters of support. Supervisor O'Brien, city of, and our Roselle project. We have the support of the county as well as the city of Modesto. So it's big. It feels good to get all that support, and since those applications are competitive, that's really going to help. So thank you.
And Kathleen, Bill Cole, Laura Graybill, a number of members of staff have worked really hard and saw Laura and Kathleen out at Farmer's Market promoting and getting signatures. But Kathleen has led this charge in this and certainly want to acknowledge her efforts. If we don't get the grants, it will certainly not be for a lack of effort.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Kathleen and everyone that worked with her for the public outreach. It was awesome to see their plan. It was very easy to understand and just straight to the point. So thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah.
7-2, council authority members' comments. Councilmember Jones Cruz?
I just wanted to mention that we are expecting some high temperatures next week and to be careful of heat exhaustion or heat stroke. Please be mindful of pets that are outdoors and take a look and check on your neighbors that have elderly or are very young. Just kind of take it easy and be wary that we're expecting some high temperatures next week.
Councilmember Campbell?
I'd just like to thank the staff here in our community for the great job that they've been doing. I know that you've had some problems with some illnesses and certain staff members being out, and I think it's great the way that you've covered yourselves with that. You guys are doing a great job. And Kathleen, you've done a great job with the slurry project. Matter of fact, a couple of friends that come to town and play pickleball with me said, "Gosh, it's amazing. You're getting new streets to Riverbank." And they liked the way it looked.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
I attended the disaster council meeting along with Norma, and that group looks at the standardization of disaster preparedness. And a key takeaway from that meeting was to ensure that you protect yourself against all mosquitoes. So just remember, when you go out, put on your sunscreen and your repellent and just, you know, long sleeves if you need to. The, I also attended the California League of Cities Community Policy Committee, and we are supporting legislation for the homelessness, housing, and after-school programs, and also community parks. And a reminder that the senior nutrition program for vouchers for fruits and vegetables, that day is tomorrow, Wednesday, June 15th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And it is on a first-come, first-served basis and only will last as long as supplies will last. And happy Father's Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
We're already, well, we're a few weeks away from the Fourth of July, and we're already hearing and seeing illegal fireworks being set off. So just a reminder to the public that illegal fireworks is, in fact, illegal fireworks. And we have a fire danger right now, believe it or not. Even despite all the rain we had earlier in the season, the grasses are very dry. And so we want to be careful then, not to set off any fires.
Thank you.
Since I mentioned we are going to go back now to item 6.2, since we have that, and I want to thank you for taking your trip. Apology accepted because we knew what you were doing. Item 6.2, resolution approving the transportation expenditure plan and request in Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors place retail transaction and use tax measure on the November 8th, 2016 general election ballot.
And Mayor and members of the City Council, as the introduction to Ms. Klee's items and reviewing the transportation plan, I mentioned that this is a STANCOG proposal to place a ballot measure on the November 8th ballot so the voters can decide whether or not they would like to increase sales tax, to go directly back into local streets and roads and regional projects with approximately 65% going to local streets and roads. And this evening, we do, are asking council to consider approving the resolution to place this or to recommend that the Stanislaus County Council of Governments place this on the November 8th ballot. We have Rod Attaberry, who is representing STANCOG this evening, who can provide a brief overview of the expenditure plan and answer any questions about this as this has been a STANCOG effort. And appreciate them making the effort to be here this evening.
Just to correct one comment. You said that STANCOG places, it's the Board of Supervisors that will place it.
Thank you, yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for tolerating my slowness. There was quite a few presentations at Modesto City Council, so I do apologize. Rod Attaberry, I'm with the law firm of Numalair &amp; Beardsley, 509 West Weber, Stockton, California, General Counsel for Stanislaus Council of Governments, here before you this evening to hopefully just answer any questions and give you maybe just a brief overview on what you have before you. You have a detailed staff report. It is a staff report that we assisted your staff in drafting that goes through the expenditure plan. And your city manager is correct. The item before you tonight is actually two items in one resolution. The resolution that's before you this evening approves, asks you to approve the expenditure plan. The state statutes require that before the STANCOG board can request the item to be placed on the ballot, that the county and a majority of the cities representing a majority of the population, quote-unquote, approve the expenditure plan. The expenditure plan is detailed narratively in your staff report, but you actually also have it in your packets as well as part of the ordinance. There's an ordinance that would be adopted to implement the tax measure should the tax measure receive a positive support from the electorate in November. And prior to implementing that, that goes on the ballot in November, and that's the second part of the resolution, is a request from both Stanislaus Council of Governments and all of the local jurisdictions to request the County Board of Supervisors place the item on the general election scheduled for November. The ordinance is the implementing document. It gives you kind of the guidelines and the framework of how things are going to work if the measure is passed. The measure itself is an exhibit to the ordinance, and you have the full expenditure plan itself before you this evening. I do need to make one correction. On page 2 of 9 of the expenditure plan, there is language in the last paragraph that says the percentages for each local jurisdiction is based on the 2015 population. And that word "population" needs to be scratched. It's based on the 2015 sales tax-generated revenue. Those numbers remain, and the percentage remains. What doesn't, what changes each and every year, and we hope continuing to increase, is the amount of sales tax that's otherwise received. The estimate based on the 2015 numbers are $960 million will be generated over a 25-year period. Each local jurisdiction, including the county, has an identified percentage based on the 2015, I almost said "population," again, 2015 sales tax-generated revenue numbers. And that will remain consistent. We hope that goes up, and if it goes to $1.5 billion, then your percentage will multiply times that number, and your revenue coming back to your local jurisdiction will be what's received. There's been comments about this being the third attempt or the third bite at the apple. This shows a willingness of the community to continue to work on this very important issue, and it's not the same apple that has been before you and been before the electorate before. What's changed substantially and what's got all of the local jurisdictions and Chamber of Commerce and Farm Bureau and everybody coming out in support of it is the local control. As you see the pie chart that's in your report, that pie chart represents the percentages for individual given types of projects. So you see you've got local streets and roads. You've got bicycle impede, traffic management. Of that, 65% of all of the dollars raised will be under local control. There are specific safeguards identified within the expenditure plan as well as also codified in the ordinance. Some of the safety protocols include a citizens oversight committee with a citizen from each one of the communities to make sure that we're doing the calculations correctly. And there is very strict language in terms of what the state can and can't take. They get some administrative costs to be able to pass the tax down to the local jurisdictions or to STANCOG, who then will use the formula that's presented in your report to allocate the appropriate funds. But they can't take any more of that. Another thing that cannot change without going back out for a full vote is the percentages associated with where the money goes. So the 65% will remain in local control, and that was one of the crucial issues in previous elections. And I might, you know, might add that we missed it by like 128 votes the last time around, 66.4%. So it was a narrow, narrow margin. There's been enough significant changes in it that we believe that this has real merit, and the consensus around these issues have been really positive, and we're feeling confident about this at this point in time. The next step, assuming you approve the resolution that's before you tonight, is the STANCOG board tomorrow evening will take up the matter, and they will have a reading, a first reading of the ordinance itself. Schedule a meeting set for June 22nd to actually adopt. And then on June 28th, the Board of Supervisors will take up the issue and the resolution associated with putting the item, or what they call calling the election, putting the actual item on the ballot. The language in the resolution in your staff report is the ballot language that'll actually be placed on the ballot itself. And with that, unless you've got any questions, I appreciate your support on the matter and consideration of the resolution that's before you.
I want to add one comment to what you've been stating. Is that this tax plan is the people's tax plan. These are the people's inputs on exactly what they wanted, and we're here to support what they need. The reason why we need this tax approval is because over the past 50 years, those taxes that we had in place to keep our roads going have slowly waned in, I guess, monies. Most specifically is your gas tax. More efficient cars, like whoever's driving that hybrid out there, you know, is paying one-third the taxes that he would have if he had a regular car. So we have to come up a way to take care of our roads, and this is one of the best ways of doing it. We missed it because of some negativity in this area. What we need to do is the council members and the public and the employees to go out there, not just to support this tax, but to become advocates. Go out there and get people to listen to you. Why it's important, especially those who have negativity, and have them pointed to the right direction. STANCOG staff is doing a marvelous job of turning thought processes around. So if you have questions, please ask.
And I'll just say, Mayor O'Brien, I probably didn't need to even show up tonight. You handle this very well, and you're a great educator on behalf of this measure yourself. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out the two things that you've mentioned, which is, this is a people's plan. It is also a local jurisdiction plan in terms of the types of projects. The types of projects were actually gleaned from your staff and from members of your public to try to figure out the right projects that would benefit your community the best. Second, and your mayor points out correctly, that this is so critically important because of the number of local jurisdictions that are self-help counties. And that's really what this is. This is a self-help tax. 81% of the communities and the counties in California have a self-help tax measure to deal with their streets and roads. And what that allows them to do is not only deal with the gas tax issue that people are facing in terms of car efficiencies, but it also allows STANCOG to leverage those funds. So other counties, the 19%, including Stanislaus County currently, do not have the ability without a self-help tax measure to leverage those funds from both the state and federal government. And as a result of that, Stanislaus County has been passed over for those leveraged funds. We don't have funds that we can match, and as a result of not having matching funds, we lose out on those opportunities. This gives us the opportunity to be able to leverage those funds. So although we may only raise $960 million only, $960 million for this county, it gives us the ability to double that money in leveraged funds and the opportunity to do so. So it's extremely important that you do educate your community and continue to educate on this particular measure. So thank you.
I only had a quick comment that I'd like to make. Although it's very difficult to get folks to, anytime they hear a tax increase, they just kind of freak out. I think the old adage that you get what you pay for really kind of falls into place here. And I can't say that came from me, but I think that came from our city manager. And I have to agree with that adage, is that you get what you pay for. And I think that you need to kind of keep some of those things in mind. Two of the things that kind of stuck out in my head when I reviewed the report and that kind of helped me out was the 65% going to local control. It's huge. It's huge. And also the safeguards that are in there. I took a good look at the safeguards and really agree with what the report had stated as far as the safeguards go for this particular plan. Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
I have just a couple of things. One, I think STANCOG, I've been following along, has done a great job with listening to the people, as the mayor said, and as Councilmember Anne Jones Cruz said. Likewise, I do feel it's time that we pass this because of the declining revenues and other sources so that we can have good roads like the rest of the state does, or most of the rest of the state, and that we become a self-help county because we really need that drastically. The only question that I'd like to have you clarify for me is the percentage rates are based upon sales tax. Do they review that each year so that if, say, your sales tax goes up, your percentage goes up, or if it goes down, it goes down? Or what happens with that?
It is not an annual review. This was a snapshot in time at 2015, and the Citizens Advisory Committee, also the Executive Committee of STANCOG, as well as the Policy Board itself, decided to take a snapshot in time. There were three different options to look at: population, road miles, and a sales tax-generated revenue. And because we had several jurisdictions that were below a percentage that wouldn't receive hardly anything, we set a floor of 1.25. With rounding, it comes out in your table. If you'll see, page 3 of the expenditure plan, it sets a 1.26% for those jurisdictions that were below that number. So it is not a renewing number each and every year. It's based on the 2015 number, and your percentage is a set percentage moving forward. Your numbers will fluctuate in terms of the dollars that you generate based on the amount of dollars that are otherwise generated overall sales tax. So your number, your numbers are impacted by the amount of sales tax you generate here locally, but they're also generated by all of the county. And so you get the benefit of both sides of that numbers. But those numbers are set. And I can tell you, I don't remember your exact percentage off the top of my head. You were one of those that took advantage of the sales tax generation in terms of the 3.42% versus the 1.25. You would have taken a different number had it been population. And your mayor actually fought hard for one of those issues as well in terms of coming up with a formula to figure out that the percentage... out that the percentages were based on sales tax revenue generated.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other further comments? Okay, we take this in two parts, correct?
It's in...
One resolution, not in two parts?
It is in one resolution, and I would just ask that you note that we do have one minor change to the expenditure plan on page two of nine.
Are there any public comments? Bring it back to the council for action and/or comments.
I make a motion to approve item 6.2.
With the noted exception?
With the noted exception on page two of nine.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve item 6.2 with the noted exception, and we have a second.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Five zero.
All right. The last item, of course, was my last words, item 7.3. I do have a couple of comments. One is that we are preparing to go before LAFCO again at the 27th, I believe, of July, and we are making preparations. And have we contacted Consolidated? Have they met with us yet?
They have not met with us, but I did receive a communication from the chief yesterday. He has been out with an injury, so we are resuming that. We've also had contact with their legal counsel, so that is proceeding.
Okay. And tomorrow morning, I meet with Modesto and one of the LAFCO members in the afternoon. So, that should shore up any questions that LAFCO has, with the exception of support or at least neutral reactions with Modesto. This last week, I believe, about 10 days ago, there was a pipeline rupture in Near Patterson that affected three communities, quite frankly, putting Patterson at great risk, water... no, Newman at great risk, and then shutting down the pipeline to Turlock. Do... Are we all up on our certifications and OES?
We are working actually right now to update our emergency preparedness plan that we'll be bringing back to the council, probably at the meeting in July. We are... You know, so that's something that has been a priority for some time. In terms of contact with PG&E, I would have to ask Michael to address the latest review of our pipelines.
And not only PG&E's pipeline, but also Hetch Hetchy's nine-foot pipe that runs under the city of Riverbank. I'd like to know how long it takes to shut off water if it should rupture, what is the amount of water that will be flowing, and the velocity. And that should be worked into our emergencies operations.
In terms of a scenario, yes. That would be something we would need to be prepared to deal with, and that was certainly a wake-up call. I think it's always a good reminder.
I've already made my comments on the transportation initiative. I know I was gone when we voted on the broken wall. We are the city of action, and that's ugly. It's been ugly now for four months. It needs to get cleaned up and/or fixed. I know... I believe we should have an update on it and possible action taken at the next council meeting, if possible, on how to repair or correct this situation. It's taking a long time, and that's on a major thoroughfare. And, you know, I'm into pretty.
Yes, and based on previous council direction, we have contacted the property owner, who is contacting his insurance company and working through our claims process, but at this point, there's been no resolution in terms of the homeowner's insurance to cover that wall. So, we are continuing to have contact with the homeowner to get a sense of where that's at and whether or not the homeowner's insurance policy that he has will indeed honor that claim.
Could it be honored? Have us fix it? Could it still be honored?
It...
I know you lose your leverage, but...
I mean, that is a possibility. The city could put forth the funds to repair the wall and then continue to try and get the insurance company to pay for it, to reimburse the city for those costs. A long shot, but it's certainly an avenue that we can take, and that is sort of the dilemma is between speed and cost. So, be happy to bring that back with a formal update for the council.
And for those of you who don't know, we had a civil grand jury give direction to us to provide an update on all of our properties, and that we have to make it easy for the public to access and understand, and we'll have some type of report out prior to us answering the grand jury.
Yes, actually, that will come back to the city council. We'll provide an update to you on that and respond to the grand jury consistent with the report. It was essentially a request for information, and we'll be more than happy to provide that, and I'm sure the council will concur with agreeing with their recommendations and providing the information as requested.
The only way I knew about it is that they sent me the civil grand jury thing. Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Rod, thank you very much, sir.